Okay, we'll get started. It's 7:00 PM, council meeting on Thursday, January 11th, 2018. We'll call the meeting to order. I do want to welcome everybody to the council meeting. Being my first council meeting for 2018, I did on my Albernette colors for the occasion. I would ask everybody silence whatever devices that they do have with them so we don't have any phone calls that anybody has to take at least loudly during the meeting. Due to 2018, we did add the pledge allegiance to the council meetings for the term. I will be giving the pledge. I will stand and give the pledge. I asked at least the council members to do the same thing. The audience can take the pledge if they want to, but we'll do that this time. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Sharon, would you take roll call by last name of the member's presence, please?
Tron.
Present.
Tron?
Yes.
Saracen here. Mensen? He said he is still at work.
He did say that he had to work probably because of the inclement weather, so, yep, he did pass on some notes for me though for the meeting. All right, and then would also approve the agenda. Sharon, recognize any changes other than bills? Okay, then I'd seek approval of the current agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Shans.
Second.
Second by Saracen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. The sheriff's report, we'll go ahead and put on hold very likely, as I mentioned earlier, that it was delayed because of weather, but deputy shows up, we'll get that right back on there. Also on the agenda now is mayor's report and proclamations. We have no proclamations for this evening. On my report, would just like to say that the, I spoke to fire chief earlier this week, and we're happy to see that the AFG, the grants have come out for the next month. I know that you had worked with consulting group to get those, so I'm hoping for something positive for that, maybe for equipment or whatever it is you're seeking this year. And then I did note that January was National Mentoring Month, so that's what we have going on for January, so, and I don't have any other notes for that other than, I'll be speaking again a little bit later in the agenda to discuss the filling of the open seat. Just as a reminder for the filling of that open seat, there's two methodologies for that. One by appointment, one by election, and with the 40-day timeline, we do need to take action.
Sixty days.
Oh, I'm sorry, forty is what it said in the, unless it changed, but...
Sixty.
Okay, all right, the code shows forty, so, but if it is the forty, we have to take action tonight, so...
Yeah. If you're trying to appoint, you have to put it in the paper and announce that it needs to be appointed yourself.
Okay, well, we'll take a look at the code a little bit closer later, so, all right, and then that's all I have. For council reports?
Chester, any reports? And Joe, anything?
All right, very good. Then we'll move on to citizen comments. This is the time and place for any citizens that would have any comments for the council to go ahead and make those. I would remind you that you have a five-minute limit for these particular comments. This is for agenda items, so if you have comments on the agenda items, this is the time and place to go ahead and make those comments. Seeing none, we'll move on to the non-agenda items. This is the time and place for anyone, any citizens or anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council or make any comments on non-agenda items or address the council. Mr. Joe, we'll go ahead and recognize you. You have up to five minutes. If you'd state your name and address clearly for the record, and then go ahead and make any comments that you have. Go ahead, sir.
Tim Hittl.
And your address?
147 Moonheart Street.
Very good, thank you.
I'm wondering about the lot line markers. That this was supposed to be replaced when you got through with the street project. We don't have that.
Okay, is, oh, those are your only comments, is the question of the lot line markers, the completion of the Moonheart Street project?
Well, that'd be your start.
Okay, all right, I just want to give you a full opportunity to speak. Guy, do you know if the lot line completion is...
I have a document from MSA as to all the markers that they removed or found when they did the survey for the site, and cold weather moved in, so I'm not able to do anything about that until spring. I don't know if there was any in front of Jim's residence or not. I haven't looked at the document that closely, but anything that they, that got removed during construction that MSA found, our engineer, will be put back. And there is no law, statute, or rule that says we have to place lot markers in that were not there, so whatever's theirs.
Taking the time right, yeah.
They were all clearly defined. Everybody's sidewalks, lot lines, were all clearly defined on Moonheart Street exactly. Everybody's work before you did the project.
There was not a marker in every...
We have picture proof.
I will make sure I follow up and get you an answer for that, all right?
Yes, sir.
All righty, any comments from council, Mr. Joe? Any other comments, Mr. Joe? Any other comments from the audience? Okay, hearing none, that completes the citizen comments section. We'll move on to item 10, the written reports from, I have both Public Works and the Fire Department in front of me. We'll start with Public Works. Other than your written comments, which I appreciate, thank you for doing those. That helped immensely with having those for the record and to refer back to. Any other comments besides those?
Just that, I was kind of hoping Councilman Mensen would be here. He mentioned, we had a discussion the other day about the salt that we use on the road, and he was going to try and look into whether there could be a sharing agreement with Marion, City of Marion, on the salt. We typically go to, have been the last couple of years, been going to Hopkins into a company called Snowgo, and getting mini tote bags, three to four, three to 3,500 pounds per bag, and mixing that with sand ourselves, which works great because we don't have to have an enormous amount of salt on hand. He's feeling like maybe we could get by a lot cheaper if we can just take a little delivery from Marion at the time. I don't know, just was hoping, he was talking like he might have some information. We'll just have to put that on next month, so...
I think all council members kind of hear different comments from citizens and stuff. There is a unique difference between open roads out in the county and once you enter into the city as far as weather and windage and house blockage and tree blockage and things like that, and the limitations of what the roads can do, but I know you folks do get out there right away and get to working on those.
Is Brian talking about getting the Snowgo or getting sand already mixed?
No, I think he's talking about, I think Marion uses straight rock salt. Snowgo is a mixture of rock salt and calcium chloride, which has better melting capability than rock salt does, but we're also paying for the convenience of this product being in that mini tote bag. The benefit is, if I have a bag that I have not used, it's in a plastic bag within that mini tote and it's sealed. I had one left over from last year, and there was no chunks, no, you know, it didn't get moisture in it. It was 100% ready to use when we used it this year. If we have two or three ton of plain rock salt sitting in the shed all summer, it's going to trap, all that moisture is going to be nothing but clods when we go to use it the next year. So there's trade-offs either way, but if the straight rock salt is enough cheaper, even if we use more, it might be worth taking that loss, you know what I mean, of having chunks you can't get broke up and get through the sand. But a lot of math has to be done. I need to know what if they would work with us and what the charge would be versus what we're paying for Snowgo, so, we just got to do the math. We just had that conversation just five days ago, so, yeah, it's just something that'll be on the horizon, that's why I brought it up.
Other questions for Guy?
I do want to say thank you for your timely response to the fire hydrant that was damaged and to the water main break that they was taking care of, so I do appreciate that. And Fire Department, we have your report here as well. Thank you for completing that. Again, that helps immensely, both for the written record and for us to refer back to. Any other additional comments, Chief?
Steve Meyer that had his 200 grant called tonight, and he's working on it tonight, and hopefully it'll be, I don't know, due till February something, but he's working on it, and had a few questions, I have two more later.
I had an opportunity to meet with Chief Graham the other day, and he gave me a more in-depth tour of the Fire Department. I can say that you're in tight quarters both for training and what you need to complete your special in the winter months, which only emphasizes again the need for a new fire station, which you know is a top priority myself and in this council, I believe. I find it very hard to believe that you held council meetings there at one time. That is some tight quarters back in there, so I just wanted to... I tell you, it is, it's something.
It's that early, so you got some good chairs, because you had a lot of big chairs at that time.
So, quite the deal, but I do appreciate the tour and the information and some of the history there, and just to reiterate my commitment and the commitment to get that new fire station. It is much needed. We were also discussing some of the age of the vehicles which has come up with council and the maintenance associated with that, and we were discussing whether or not there's a deputy sheriff there, and we were discussing the new trucks and things like that, and you couldn't get a new truck in there, so you're kind of locked into this equipment because you get a new one, you couldn't even fit it into the fire station, and that's a fundamental problem, so... Yes, sir, we will go ahead and stop and recognize a deputy so he can get back on the road, and we'll allow him to do his report now.
And at the Schleswig-Winter sheriff's office, out of the 43 required hours, we had 75.8 hours logged, and we had 21 calls for service. Questions or comments?
Questions, Gary, there. Joe?
What's it mean by administrative, the lost first five of them? So we might have... The generic ones, it might have been some, we recorded lost or found. Executive sheriff.
If you can, or any concerns from your side for the City of Albernette, any issues that we need to address from you?
Not that I'm aware of.
Can you share some more? Okay, well, we do appreciate you coming in and submitting the report, and we'll let you get back at it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
All right.
Have a good night. Yep, you too.
All right, there's no other questions concerning the written reports. We'll move on to item 11, which is the consent agenda. Recognize city clerk.
Additional invoices on Office Express brought case of paper in cartridges. Your black one's still on back there, I haven't gotten any of that.
Did he just talk to you about paper and what else? I think half the time, yeah.
How, you need a big one, I mean, you need that one like that or just a regular?
No, just a paper.
Here, I got a couple of them around here.
Do that.
I suppose, now you're a white state person, too.
Yeah, that's awesome.
And then Schimber, this is for repair on that fire hydrant down there, and that's been billed out to her. This is Laura Proper, this is her application and testing for EMT. And then we have Horace Brothers for 365, and this was for the repair over at the elevator, and then Schimber here is with her at the elevator, and both of those were billed out to Ohio today. And those were added to the bottom of the list here.
All right, then I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
So moved.
Moved by Tron. Seconded by Shans. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries, consent agenda is approved. Item 12, new business. We'll recognize Mr. Gibbons, is that correct, for website design. This is a somewhat of a demonstration or some work that you put together from a website. This is something that was discussed in previous months, and we'll recognize you at this time.
Again, my name's Mike Gibbons, I live in Albernette, just outside the side of the sod farm. I took the delivery to basically create a new framework design for your website. Everywhere there's gray, oh, that's what I was gonna say, everywhere there's gray, there's supposed to be an image. Your current website is very lacking on images, so we're going to have to work on getting images itself. This can have one tile, basically, or it can have as many tiles as you want. Each tile has, you can have different verbiage, different buttons, different everything for each of the tiles, and get it just, oh, wrong way. So it just, it moves and it'll move automatically, and that can be done on three seconds, five seconds, 10 seconds, however long it goes. This is just the, I gotta remember you got the wrong mouse here. There's all the services, basically. I'll take the current services you guys have on the current site and move everything over, and, but I'm hoping for is when you guys decide if you want to move with this, you guys have a general consensus, and then I just work with one person instead of four people, because you're getting four different answers. All the community events, all the government things, residents, businesses, that's all changed. We can change any of that if you want, or we can take it all off or put it all on, whatever you want. Again, I just built a basic framework, so you guys would see something different than what your current website is. That's just the services. Each one, if you click on one, it goes to a different section. Come on.
We'll have better internet next Thursday, by the way.
I think everybody's in the process of that around town.
Yeah. So just each area can have their own sections and stuff like that, which is pretty cool for a municipality or city or town type of website. Different menu items, we can change the menu items. Down below, there's different sections, you can highlight things, like two weeks ago, you posted something on the Facebook, Fire Station Facebook, those images were phenomenal. You could highlight, that's the type of images we need on the website. You could put something here, you know, something about the fire. You got a new EMT, you can put a little something on that about them, and you let the town know what's really going on, instead of just the kind of how the website is currently. This website, too, is also what they call a content management system, where Sharon can do the updating. You don't need me to update the stuff. Everything's a backend, very simple, upload image, type in a section, and it's done. So it's really quick, really easy upload and maintain. Again, this is just more, wherever there's a gray spot, there's supposed to be images, and this is, you can say something about, you know, fire station, the parks, stuff like that, just education, you can put something there in the school. I know that the current website has a lot of things about new residents, Hawaiian Energy, how the schools are, how the parks are, stuff like that. So a lot of the stuff will transfer over. I just didn't want to do a lot of work until you guys saw the framework. Section enter for mayor, basically, this is where we get a picture of the mayor, and we'll write up a lot of them, you know, how successful, how, whatever, however you guys want to do, whatever you guys want to do. And you can have additional, like we were talking, these are actual real numbers I looked up for Albernette, believe it or not, from the current information. You can have different page, too, of all the council members, little bios on each council member, stuff like that on your website. And then just more, again, latest news, how to contact, just general information, events, event calendar, where, right now, you guys have one event on there, that was last year's benefit days. You have a whole calendar where you can actually put events coming up. Street closure is going to happen next month at this date, so the people could actually be informed of what's going on, instead of ringing the phone into the pocket of Sharon every day. So that's just, I mean, just to, I took the colors, green off the, green off the logo. Colors are very interchangeable, font colors are changeable, how highlights Hoover's, I mean, everything that can be done is just very interchangeable, very programmatic, so, I mean, whatever colors you guys do decide on, whatever images you do decide on, that's where you guys have to come and help me. This is just a framework that I built for you, so... You guys have any questions at all, or...
I do, so I have a couple of questions. One, we have a lot of documents that we host as far as the agendas and meeting minutes and things like that.
Yep.
How, where would we have to host those to be able to share them out?
That could still be on the same site. I already downloaded it.
Same, it says with pictures and all that kind of thing.
Yeah, I've already downloaded everything. Again, the images that you got, I can spell, that's the key. The images that you guys have are, except, these are all very small. I showed her the difference there, I mean, they don't expand, they're not thumbnails, they're just very small images, and they would not look right on the new website. You have PDFs in the agenda minutes that go back 10 years, so the idea that, you know, I would ask is, do you need all 10 years, or can we use like an archive of a different, somewhere else, and if you still need them, they're still online, but they're not readily available type thing, something like that, so, yeah, I sucked everything down off there, that one PDF folder is huge, so...
Second question, search ability, so...
There's a, there's a search thing, the user actually Googles back in to search the whole site, so...
Will it go into documents?
Uh, it won't, no, because the PDFs are not searchable.
Okay.
It'd be like Tiff documents that have to be searchable, stuff like that, so, but you could do, you know, you definitely search on name of whatever. If you're looking for agenda item, you know, 1017, you could look up 1017, and it'll bring up those back, so yes.
I have one last question about where this is hosted, kind of what the, if there's an uptime agreement or anything like that.
I have my own dedicated servers, they're hosted in Utah. I have about 36 websites on it right now, and it was down once about three months ago because another customer decided to fill up his hard drive, so I isolated it to where everybody gets their own hard drive now, so uptime, I like to say it's 9999, so...
Backups?
I do backups daily and weekly.
Have you ever had to recover it?
Nope, because I only recover when there's...
Right.
The user makes a problem or you get hacked, and my background outside of the websites is, it brings the security, and I secure the sites pretty well, so, in fact, it'll be a two-factor authentication for even to get in, show up to, hit a button, it'll text a code to a smartphone, if you go on the smartphone, it'll ring you.
It'll adapt you one.
It'll ring you, so then you just ring it and it'll press one to ring, so, so it checks who's getting in the sites, too.
Have you ever run a test to see how quickly you could recover?
Uh, the sites really are only 25 to 50 megs, I mean, so, I mean, it could be done in an hour, under an hour. What's your current recovery time?
I haven't seen any kind of contract, no one's done it.
So, this is just basically a static Easter mail site. The one that I'm posing is a, like I said, a content, a database. It's got a database backend, text frontend, images, it's just all, so Texas loaded one way, the databases are on a different, so there are actually two different backups, so... And even before any updates made, I'll show you how to do a backup, that way you know we can revert right back to the same version, or... Again, gray is where images are. This is a full screen, it doesn't have to be full screen, it can be box like your other one looks like, square, small, so it's up to you guys how you want it designed.
Mobile ready?
Oh, yeah, mobile response, I guess.
Do we have the option to adjust content based on PC versus mobile? A lot of times, you know, a lot of page content doesn't play...
Yep, yep, because let's say this menu item here, when it's too, the font is too big, I could say, don't show on mobile, then write one for the mobile side, yes.
Can we get that down to page level, I mean, depending on...
It's, everything's mobile, I mean, pull it up right now on your cell phone.
What's that?
It's albernette.mms101.com/albernette.
And if any of you don't know, Mike already does our computer security for us and does our updates and takes care of that stuff. He's also the tech support guy at the school here in town, and you probably help, what, 80% or better of the businesses in town with computer things, so, just, I didn't know if any, if all of you knew that, so...
And I've been in Albernette since 2006 or seven, six, six. So again, I am not customizing, say again, sir?
We talked about this for some time. Some of the requirements that I wanted to see in the new website was currently, if you go onto the website and you click a form, you'll see that it'll, it'll give you the form, but basically it's a PDF you gotta print off and...
Correct.
...fill out and then give to Sharon and so on and so forth, to make those online forms, to where you fill in the information, submit it, and then it would go directly to the city.
That's very doable. Some of the things that, that's just going to take more time, okay? That's very doable.
Okay, but it can be done, but the forms can be converted to be online forms and filled out, so...
Correct.
And the forms can have requirements in them, so they can't leave them blank.
Absolutely.
I don't like blank forms.
If they're blank, they won't submit, yeah, require the form.
So they either fill out the form correctly or they won't get the form.
One thing that just, Google implemented something about September of last year, where all sites highly recommended SSL, so you'd want it anyway, so, and when you get a site, SSL also requires a static IP address, so that's just some things that, it'll be, it'll be your site SSL, so if anybody fills out any kind of forms, that's going to be encrypted traffic going to an email or somewhere, wherever you guys want to send.
And then one of the top things that I've requested was for notifications of citizens. City of Robbins does a great job with it with their website, where they can either go in and sign up, or they can do pre-designated lists usually by an email address, or...
So define what kind of notifications you're talking about?
Snow events, lost dog, emergency within the city, something like that, notifications of construction, and it would automatically send out an email or a text message to their phones and say, this is what's going on. I could forward the examples of that on the City of Robbins, or distribution list.
Probably how that's done really in the background is they, you probably can go sign up at there, but there's probably a different mechanism in the backend that's doing, like an email provider or something like that. With, if I host this, you guys are going to get your own emails at albernette, you know, iowa.org or whatever, so, and you can have a distribution list that you can put anybody on, so, currently right now, I don't know if you guys have your own emails or not.
No.
So, yeah, I mean, this, this can create the list, you can sign up, and then it's going to put a list somewhere in a form in the website, and we definitely can say somewhere, highlight everything and mail out something like that, this one, and it's going to be a manual process where somebody has to own it.
That's actually my next agenda item as well.
Okay, is, but that's a, is that something that you could do, or...
Well, absolutely, absolutely.
I mean, to make it automated?
There's, there's no, I mean, somebody's got to trigger the event, so that's, when they trigger the event, that's how the mail's going to go out, so who's going to trigger the event? That's what Iowa, if somebody has started, the snow coming down doesn't say, the website doesn't know it's snowing.
Right, I get that.
So yes, as long as somebody can trigger the event, highlight, you know, distribution list, east side of town versus the west side, however you guys want to break it up. Yes, sir.
The people have to, the ones that are interested in this, would have to sign up themselves.
They, we could put a spot on there, under the form where it says sign, just leave your first name, last name, and email.
Rather than have somebody here sign everybody in town.
I'll, I'll speak for that.
Yeah, the thing that you ought to do is keep, now, the thing, doing it this way is somebody from Fontana, California can do the, put their name and number on there, too. So, and, so, you know, that's just, yeah, right, so you guys are going to have to clean the list also, or verify the list.
What's your development time look like, understanding that we owe you a lot of content?
Uh, I always like to say it's 30 days to 90 days. Creating forms is going to be, who knows, I mean, right now, this is what I call, what I call would be a basic website. Creating forms is a little bit more advanced, so each form's going to take a little time, depending on how many forms it wants created, I mean, I don't know how many forms you have, five, six, 10, three, I don't know.
There'd be the fence permit and building permits. And a fence permit, they have to bring in, because they have to have their neighbor sign it.
Special event, is that one you're...
Yeah, special event.
Could you, can you email me the events, sorry, you know, the, I mean, the forms, I don't have them yet.
Could you make the deeper website available to us so we can send out to...
It's available now to anybody.
Yeah, I just need the address.
Yeah, I didn't catch it.
And send it to the current council, so they can review it. We have a missing member this evening, obviously.
Absolutely, yeah, it's live, so, I mean, it's... Yeah, it's live, so, I mean, it's. So, yeah, I, it's fully, I said, uh, I sent Dragon, you know, we sent Joe, so. Any other questions you guys have?
I don't have any other questions, Council Joe.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
I'm gonna be taking off, guys, so. All right, we'll talk tomorrow.
If there's no other questions concerning the website demonstration, we'll move on to item twelve B, mass notification system. We recognize, Councilman Searis.
Thank you. Um, so I do have experience in the space, and like, as Mike said, to, to do notifications, you kinda need that backend infrastructure where they're able to do the call down, like the text messaging and emailing. So for, we don't have to make any decisions tonight, obviously, but I called around to a couple of the vendors that I've worked with previously and others in the space. I referenced, um, the tool that the school utilizes, the one call now. I've not gotten a quote back from them yet. So right now, um, the quotes that I do have, we're looking anywhere from about five thousand to ten thousand dollars a year for unlimited subscriptions to be able to send whatever notifications we want. All of those would include a self-registration form that we would post on the website where people could sign up to receive those and volunteer us their, um, contact information as well. One of the vendors did say that we could share the service with, uh, the, the limit is on the number of people you have registered. And it generally goes up to about ten thousand, they're in tiers, so you go from zero to ten thousand and then you go above that. So we could share with a neighboring community if they were interested and be able to cut that in half. So if we, you know, Walker, someone nearby, um, didn't have such a system and were interested, we could work together on that.
Is that something we could do maybe with existing school systems and, I don't know what other school systems use?
Yep, I know, you're back from.
Jump on an existing contract that's big enough?
Yeah, is there another city around, another town that has this, we could jump on as a possibility?
Yep, definitely worth looking into. Um, the other thing I found is there is a system called Alert Iowa, um, from Homeland Security that counties are able to use for free. I was not able to determine some online information if that was. If that was.
Kind of a medical emergency.
Available to the community, so that's something we could check into, to reach out to Iowa Homeland Security and see if Alert Iowa will be available to us as well. And that was at no cost to counties, and Lynn County does participate.
Well, given the information on the site, it may be worthwhile to do that, go ahead.
What type of alerts would you typically expect to send out?
Um, so I could see it, mainly they're used for emergencies, so water main breaks, if there's a boil order in place, that's a quick way to let everybody know. Um, snow emergencies, that type of thing, but I know we had also talked about, how do you post for hydrant flushing? So you could send that a little more informally where that's just through email versus your emergency stuff that goes to all the devices. To kind of, you can right-size it, it doesn't have to be a blast to every device that they sign up with.
Would the council be interested in seeing the examples Robinson's out? I have your emails, I can forward you the ones I received from them. Yeah, okay.
I mean, I haven't signed up to receive through the county, they're doing construction updates when it comes around, so that type of.
But as you drew an email, is what I, what I kept up with.
Yeah, and I sign up for the text message, so it's by person, you, you give them what device and they would send it to you that way.
Would this system be similar as far as sending out, uh, email notification?
Yep.
As long as any resident signed up for that service.
Right, we would have to do.
Just like with the county.
Exactly, we'd have to do a campaign to make people aware that we have this now and to get these updates, you need to sign up. So there'd be a little marketing upfront. So I can continue to, to talk to vendors and, and hopefully you're back for more to get some comparison, but I wanna have numbers if this is something registered in for a lot of talks.
So this would be comparable with what we have.
Yep, yep.
Uh, this is above and beyond what this can do.
Is it above and beyond the website, yeah?
Yeah, that's what I wonder, understand it, but, 'cause I, I didn't wanna have a duplication effort.
No, no, so Mike could host the forum or they sign up, but his site wouldn't have the, the phone dialers or anything like that to make the phone calls.
I see.
We need that infrastructure on the backend. From an administrative standpoint, whoever would be sending the notifications, you can have saved templates, makes it very easy to send things out. There's a lot of options.
Have you seen a lot of demand from people, you know, saying, do you wanna see this? I don't know.
I think people wanna know what the city's up to, and this would be a good way to make it more economical for us versus, I mean, how else do you get hold of people other than sending snail?
Well, the only thing is, we didn't have our mobile, our website at that time wasn't as mobile on your phone, so now this.
And we weren't able to update it, yeah.
Yeah, and so now, you know, a lot of that would just be, they can get to the website, they can phone us, which is.
True emergencies though, I remember when we first started living here, there was a boil order and we didn't find out until later that evening when we were watching KCRG. And it was one of those, you know, is that something people need to know of more immediately? There's something to think about, no action tonight.
Well, I think it's worthwhile to look into. Any other, uh, questions for? Okay, so we'll move on to item twelve C, Emerald Green Lawn Care Contract, we'll, uh, recognize Guy for this. It looks like most of it maybe pertains to stuff that you would be overseeing the.
Yeah.
Moving on anyway, at least it looks like those areas anyway, the.
Yeah, and honestly, the, this is just weed control in the grassy areas that we mow. They do fertilizing and, and weed control. Emerald Green used to be local, it, it used to be, uh, Rick McGraw, he sold it out. It's now owned by a, a company in Lisbon. It was almost disastrous this year getting the new crew to figure out where they were gonna spray. Um, I don't know if that was for communication between Rick and the company or if the crew was not capable of handling directions well. I seem to think it was the latter after visiting with them. I don't doubt that the prices are probably, um, as competitive as you can find. I guess I'd like, before we just sign this agreement, I'd like to get a quote, uh, for same services from Lynn Co-op's lawn care business because they have a facility here in town, um, at least. Uh, and so that's the main reason for discussing this is, I'd like to, to look at some other options now that the business isn't, isn't local anymore.
I have one complaint about it. Yesterday.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
I had three more invoices, one from July, one from August or something, that said I hadn't paid, I have to go through, it was paid, they cashed the check. Looking at them, this is.
Sharon's been fighting it all, ever since the transition, the billing is totally screwed up.
And I know residential customers that aren't satisfied with their service as well. So I think it's good if we look at.
I'll look.
Get the opportunity to pull out of it.
I definitely wanna look at Lynn Co-op, they have lawn care business, and I can go further than that too.
I had a problem with them, I give them one, one more chance.
Yeah, gotcha.
And if they can't do what they're supposed to, then stop, done with them.
I'll, I'll grab. I'll grab another couple bits and be ready next, next meeting if that's what council wants.
Counselor Trump, any comments? All right, it sounds like the, it sounds like the desire of the council is to go ahead and table this pending additional quotes and, uh, you're gonna oversee that?
Yeah, go for it.
All right. Item stable pending additional quotes, we'll move on to item twelve D, Resolution Zero-One Twenty-Eighteen-Dash-One. Discuss and approve the official publication of approving the Lynn newsletter. This is the newsletter we currently use, uh, unless anyone has any discussion on it, I'd seek a resolution to approve the Lynn newsletter under, uh, Resolution Zero-One Twenty-Eighteen-Dash-One. Resolution.
I'll make a motion and we adopt, approve Resolution One Two, Twenty-Eighteen-Dash-One.
Moved by Shans. Second by Trump, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Move to item E, Resolution Zero-One Twenty-Eighteen-Dash-Two. This is a resolution for the depository and maximum deposit utilizing Farmer State Bank, Alvernet, Iowa for one point seven point five million for the maximum depository. This is again the current, uh, institution that we use, it's seeking motion to approve Zero-One Two Eight, Twenty-Eighteen-Dash-Two.
I move we approve Resolution, Resolution Zero-One Two Eight, Two Thousand Eighteen-Dash-Two.
Moved by Trump. Second by Searis, and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. All right, we'll move to, uh, item number twelve, appoint city clerk Sharon Robinson for an additional two years. Uh, according to the ordinance after the January, or the January meeting after the city election, the appointment is for additional two years. Sharon, I assume that you are willing to serve another two years with the city?
Serve, that's what they're planning. Okay.
She, she is willing, the appointment's there, she also acts as our city treasurer. Uh, any discussion from council members? Hearing none, I'd ask for an appointment to, uh, or ask for the approval of the appointment for Sharon Robinson to serve an additional two years as the city clerk for Alvernet, Iowa.
So moved.
Moved by Shans. Second by Trump, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We'll move to item G, appointment of a, of a, the, um, empty or vacant seat for the previous council position. Now, I may be in error here, but what I did was pulled, 'cause I have not done this before, obviously, but I pulled the code from the city for the existing process for vacancies. So if this is incorrect, we'll need to make sure we follow the current one, but under two point nine point one six, there were two options for appointing. Option one is by appointment, option two was by election, so maybe this has been updated, but this states that, uh, we have, that has to be done within forty days after the vacancy occurs, uh, by a majority vote.
This is from the Lynn County auditor, 'cause I checked with him and this is from Rebecca. And the, your, your vacancy began at the first of the year when yours was over.
Correct.
And the appointment must be made within sixty days after the vacancy occurs by Iowa code. And if council decides to appoint a replacement, the council must publish notice of its intention to appoint at least four, but not more than twenty days before the appointment is scheduled to occur.
Okay, and did it reference three seventy-two point one-three-two A of the Iowa code? Okay, then our city ordinance must be incorrect, so we'll make a note of that to get that updated, and it shows forty days in the city.
And then the appointment would fill the vacancy only for your remaining two years.
Okay. That's my understanding, now the only thing that I would say is I would like to see an appointment rather than go to a election, which could be costly for the city, so. It's also my understanding that so far, I know that, um, Dave Bozenberg has made his intention clear in the previous, um, uh, council meeting that he'd be willing to serve, and he also had that published as well in the paper. The only other name that I am aware of is Josh Hendrickson, who is a previous council member in his previous time coming here and his administrative experience. I am made aware of that from Councilman Vincent, who has, uh, noted, who is not here, but has notified me for the record that he would have his support, uh, for Josh. Uh, I would hear any discussion, council members, at this time on this topic.
It's my opinion that Josh has a unique position within the community, um, and he's got interest in the school as well as living here, so I think he'd be a great fit and, and bring that perspective to our initiatives and, and what's really important.
I don't think that's a good idea, he's got two responsibilities here, one for the town and one for the school. Is he gonna be able to divide his needs between the school and the city? I mean, if he's elected by the city, or as a city, his, his first responsibility is to the city, in my opinion, for that's why.
Well, and we all hold full-time jobs, I mean, you can make the same argument about me.
I understand that, I understand that.
And I feel that in a small community, that the city and the school are so closely tied together that we'd have to have similar priority as well.
And I'll get to you in a second, got any other comments from council first?
Well, you're right about the city and the school being close together, which sometimes is hard to keep, it needs to be separated sometimes. We run, run into an issue that almost verges on that last year, the last year.
Other than the two names that have been submitted, have any other names been submitted to you?
No, because it hasn't been published in the paper, it needs to be published and given in line, so who knows what may come up.
The point of discussion this evening?
I'll probably throw my name in the hat.
Your name also?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have three now, any other, just, any other names or discussion from council members? All right, Guy, go ahead.
Oh, that's just what I was getting at, I, I mean, you gotta give a chance, there could be five other people you have to consider before this is over, you know, that's, that's all I was gonna.
Tonight you decide whether you wanna appoint or whether you wanna have an election. And even after you do appoint, which I will have this published in the paper, it goes in, I have it there tomorrow, one, a week from Tuesday, because it has to be there on Thursday noon. And then you'd appoint at the February meeting, and if the electors in town don't like your appointment, then they can ask for an election. So it still could end up being, but first we have to have the names in there, and we haven't got it written, and it has to be written. Appointment should submit a writ, a request in writing to the city court, if you're interested.
Are you gonna interview each candidate or?
Well, I suppose that's a possibility. Uh, ultimately, the voting members of the forum here makes the decision of who the appointment would be. I would much prefer this go by appointment than city election, I wanna make that clear that I don't wanna see an expense put on the City of Alvernet, uh, for an election when this council could make an appointment. Other discussion on this topic from council?
So you want me to publish this in the paper, right, with the?
Yes.
Okay, and I will send out with the newsletter.
I would like the, uh, the council to be thinking about it. Uh, we do have some names that are sitting out there, uh, if there's other folks that are gonna throw their name in the hat, that's fine, but for the people that we know that are out there, um, we need to reconsider and, um. Any other comments from the folks in the audience? All right, see, no other comments on that, no other comments from council on this? Considered addressed, it'll be posted and we'll make a decision. But even at the sixty-day mark then, we'll need to make some sort of action very soon. It's my understanding that at the, if the appointment doesn't occur, that it does go to election if we fail to do anything.
I'd have to tell Rebecca on that, she would have, I mean, your appointment would occur, I suppose you'd sign, and I don't know what would happen, but I'll Rebecca and find out.
Okay, yes, let's get a clarification on that, 'cause that was my understanding, that if the council fails to do anything, it does go to an election, which I do not wanna see at all.
But somebody could complain if they.
They, they could, they could.
See, and I don't know what happens when they force an election, but election would be less than two thousand dollars, I mean, it's not extraordinary.
Yeah, according to this, uh, they could, it says, I assume that part of the verbiage is still correct, that if, that, uh, if it's in dispute, that they could go to an election. All right, very good. All right, item number, uh, twelve H, the budget workshop discussion, this was put out to council, oh, ten days ago, something like that, via email. It's just a reminder that if you wish to attend that, uh, it said you need to get signed up, you should, did anyone sign up?
No, this is our, our workshop here next week.
Oh, I thought this is the one you wanted to put out with the, uh, with the one for, uh, the reminder for the folks, um, they wanted to attend that second portion of the budget.
Oh, no, this is our budget workshop next week.
Okay, this is the one for next Thursday.
Yes, our reminder.
Any comments on that?
I think it's next Wednesday, huh?
Oh, I thought it's for Thursday.
You know what, I thought we usually do Thursday, but I see I put the minute's seventeenth, so.
Because I'm gonna be gone on Thursday.
That's why we did the seventeenth.
Okay, so then it's next Wednesday.
Yeah, but then the minutes, it does say the seventeenth.
Okay, well then it's a good thing it was clarified. All right.
About at seven PM?
Yep.
Seven PM, City Hall. So noted Wednesday.
That's why I had seventeen on it.
Would you send out a clarification on that too, so Brian gets that information and, uh, make sure that we don't have any, um, confusion on that?
Oh, and I've only gotten four returns yet on my goal sheet, which would be nice to have the four, um, you know, your list of goals, so that it's a.
I have mine, I was gonna wait for that meeting, do you want that this meeting?
Yeah, because then I can kinda mark them up there so we have.
I brought mine, I'll give one to you.
Fantastic.
All righty, under old business, the Lynn County contract for law enforcement contract, I was gonna table this, I hadn't had an opportunity to talk to a few people here in town, uh, including, uh, the school systems and things like that, to see if they wanted some additional, uh, enforcement stuff. I have had an opportunity. stuff, I have had an opportunity to talk to everyone, I hope other members of the council have as well, I don't have any issues with executing the contract right now, we'll get everybody's opinion in a moment, and we'll go ahead and seek a motion to approve that contract for the year if no one has any issue, one note, notation of it, we have been doing forty-three hours a month at thirty-four dollars, it comes out to, or increases to thirty-five dollars, if we maintain the current amount, it's just over eighteen thousand dollars, eighteen sixty, I see that you'd proposed ten hours a week or forty hours a month?
They proposed that, it comes to us this way.
Okay, so I don't have an issue with forty hours a month either, they go above and beyond, so...
Well, they go above and beyond, but yeah, I don't know where, but this is the number they, and I don't know if they go by population maybe, or something, but yeah, it comes to us with the ten hours filled in.
At forty hours a month, it does fit the proposed budget, so I think, any questions or concerns from council at this time?
I feel they're very responsive anytime we do bring concerns to them, so I don't, I don't see any issues.
All right, with the budget.
I'm fine with it.
Then I would seek a motion to approve the Lynn County eighteen nineteen law enforcement contract as submitted at ten hours a week at thirty-five dollars an hour, and approve the executed contract.
I move we accept the Lynn County Sheriff's contract.
Moved by Saris.
Second.
Second by Shans, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries, go ahead and execute that, if there's no other comments or anything else to add by any council member, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
There we go.
Moved by Trump?
Second.
Second by Saris, and all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries, thank you all for attending, I will see you next week at the budget meeting, drive safely, have a good evening.